Dr. Genovasi. Mr. Kapadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Dr. Lou. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman. Ms. Williams Galliano. Dr. Wilson.
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 4th, 2024. This meeting notice is also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube, Bulldog TV, and the school district website, www.hvrc.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in any public comment, we do ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. I need a first and a second to approve the minutes of the April 29th, I'm sorry, the March 18th meeting.
Motion.
All in favor? Any opposed or opinion? I'd like to move on to our student representatives now for a report.
Now that we're almost through with April, we have started the fourth marking period strong, and many classes have started preparing for finals and AP exams. The high school had many events these past weeks. The Performing Arts Academy recital was last Thursday, where the upperclassmen in the academy performed their phenomenal pieces. The boys' lacrosse team hosted the annual first responders game last Friday, where they celebrated our local police, EMTs, and firefighters. The Yes Club hosted a series of lunch and learn events celebrating Green Week, where several speakers were invited to share their story. Our students provided service to the community in a variety of ways, including the HV Track Gives Back Day of Service and our Best Buddies Club participation in the Friendship Walk at DCNJ. And finally, we have many upcoming class-specific events, including junior prom, sophomore night out, senior prom, and senior awards day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Anyone from the Board have any questions? Seeing none, we thank you, Ms. Chu, for your time this evening, and as always, you're welcome to stay, but understand if you need to go. Have a great evening. I'm gonna hold my presidential report and pass it on to, I'm sorry, we're not going to pass it on to Dr. Treese, we're going to acknowledge our guests.
Good evening, Dr. Treese, President Williams Galliano, members of the Board, and esteemed colleagues. Tonight is truly one of the highlights of the year for the District and the Board of Education. Each year, the Governor's Educator of the Year program honors teachers and educational service professionals throughout the state whose contributions to their students are exceptional. Staff members were nominated by their peers, parents, and students. A committee from each of the six schools, consisting of an administrator, staff members, and a parent representative, used the following criteria to select their recipient: Exceptional instructional techniques, superior ability to inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, and the ability to foster excellence in education as evidenced by ongoing contributions to the improvement of student achievement and the learning environment. So at this time, we're going to ask each of our building principals to come and introduce their honorees. We'll begin with Ms. Melissa Laurie from Tolgate Grammar School.
Hi, good evening. I am honored to announce Ms. Kim Drews as the Tolgate Educator of the Year. Ms. Drews has been with the District for 20 years, coming to HVRC in 2003. Ms. Drews has spent a majority of her career at Tolgate, teaching first grade, but has been doing a fantastic job in her current position with our second-grade students. The love and energy that Ms. Drews brings to the classroom every day is felt by each and every one of her students. Two of Ms. Drews' students shared that they love how Ms. Drews is always smiling, and she gives the best hugs. A parent said it best when they shared, "Whether a child is struggling or excelling in their instruction, Kim knows exactly how to handle the situation and is always in control. She is always patient and considerate, and her students reap the benefits of her wisdom and compassion." Outside of the classroom, Ms. Drews is an active member of the Tolgate SCL Committee, Gator Group Planning, and she also serves on faculty council. In addition, she is a very active participant in the school spirit committee, ensuring that work is enjoyable experience for all of her colleagues.
Join me in congratulating Ms. Kim Drews.
Next up, Ms. Jean Freddie from Stony Brook Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Treese, President Galliano Williams, Hopewell Valley administrators, members of the Board, and community members. They say a good education can change anyone, but a good teacher can change everything, and nothing can be more true of Regina Bernetti. We all know that being an elementary school teacher, especially in the primary grade, means having an endless toolbox of strategies for almost every part of the day, and she has just that. She is committed to building a strong classroom community that lays the foundation for reading, writing, and math. In fact, she's been committed to SCL long before those letters were even a thing in the educational community. Over the past few years, especially during the pandemic, our world has become challenging for everyone, but especially a child. As one nomination stated, through the pandemic year, she demonstrated a passion for peace, connection, and community, and taught our children strategies for navigating this challenging and volatile world. But she made the transition to online learning with professionalism and diligence. Ms. Bernetti has been dedicated to the Stony Brook community since September of 2002. She started as a spectrum teacher and then became part of the first-grade team the following year. She's a pillar of our school since the opening of it. She is dedicated to the SCL of our students, helping them understand and appreciate and build a more peaceful world. As another nomination stated, Ms. Bernetti is an empathetic teacher who cares about the families and children she works with. The rhythms of her classroom are thoughtfully created to build a community among her students, and support her character growth is seamlessly woven into each element. If every teacher was like Ms. Bernetti, there actually would be no child left behind. They would all be kind, confident learners who believe in their ability to achieve greatness as part of the community they belong to. She's a treasure you rarely find, and I'm lucky to know her. Ms. Bernetti does build a beautiful community of learners, and one of my favorite parts of being part of her community is every time I see one of her students in the hallway, they end our conversation with "Have a peaceful day." So please join me in congratulating Regina Bernetti.
Next, we have Scott Bertell from Hopewell Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Treese, President Williams Galliano, members of the Board of Education, as well as the Hopewell Valley community. I have the pleasure of informing you that Ms. Wendy Heiser has been recognized as the Governor's Educator of the Year for Hopewell Elementary School. As you know, at Hopewell Elementary School, our motto this year is the Hopewell Way, and I can't speak enough about how much Wendy on a daily basis models the Hopewell Way. Not only will you find her outside of the classroom, digging in the Forging Forest for Green Week, or on one of the various committees that maybe Dr. Politzis or Ms. Donardo is gearing up for, just the Hopewell Valley Regional School District in general, but Ms. Heiser is just a rock in first grade. Anytime, as a principal, I need any help down in the primary grade levels, there's no one else that I'm gonna turn to except Ms. Heiser. She has been outstanding in my time as the Director of STEM, switching actually both programs that we were modeling at the time, and willing to jump onboard and do both of that. Some of the recommendations that were submitted as far as for her nomination, I'll go on, where Ms. Heiser goes above and beyond to ensure her students succeed. She takes a personal interest in each student's growth and development, tailing her teaching to meet the diverse needs of this classroom. This dedication results in not only academic success, but certainly the nurturing and confidence of responsible individuals at Hopewell Elementary School. While Ms. Heiser, we kid around because she is a New York sports fan, we do share a love for Penn State football. But Wendy, like I said before, and as I see your students every morning, we can't thank you enough for everything you do at Hopewell Elementary School. Thank you.
And now Mr. Jay Billy from Bear Tavern Elementary School.
Good evening, Board members and administrators and community. Today, Bear Tavern is honored to present Mrs. Mandy Perez as our Governor's Educator of the Year. Mrs. Perez is a remarkable educator who exemplifies what this award is about. She is a role model to staff and students, and continues to grow in her craft while continuing to impact the lives of hundreds of students over the years. Mrs. Perez's classroom is a nurturing and inspiring environment where her students thrive. She is loving, kind, compassionate, and patient with every student she encounters. Her ability to connect with the students on a personal level not only enhances their academic performance, but also fosters the sense of belonging and self-worth. She is truly dedicated to student success. Over the years, Mrs. Perez has been in HVRC. She has mentored many teachers in her grade level and continues to collaborate and cooperate with all staff whom she works with. She is also a parent in our school, which gives her a very unique perspective that enables her to connect with the families on a different level from our school. Mrs. Perez is a walking presence at school and community events, as she contributes to the Hopewell Valley Regional School District at a bigger level. Congratulations to Mrs. Mandy Perez, and thank you for all you do to make Bear Tavern a very special place. You've made a difference.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Chris Turnbull from Timberlane Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Williams Galliano, Dr. Treese, Board of Education, and everyone. Hello and welcome. It's such a special night, and congratulations to all of our honorees tonight. And it's so wonderful for us as principals to celebrate our schools, but when we take that step back and look at the entire district as a whole, we're so fortunate, and we really appreciate everything that you do to make it special. But tonight, it's my honor and my pleasure to announce Ms. Katie Schooly as the 2023-24 Timberlane Middle School Educator of the Year. Ms. Schooly is an educational jack-of-all-trades, working with our most involved students, as well as providing support in our most challenging academic classes. She spends the majority of her time working in our PAL, Practical Academic Learning Class, but she's worked in general education inclusion classes at the middle school level, in special classes at the elementary level, and has been instrumental in assisting the entire district with assistive technology needs. She can truly do it all. She's even a certified behavioral therapist, which helps me every once in a while. But what makes Ms. Schooly special is not just what she does and what she has done, but it's the way that she does it. She has an immediate and a lasting impact on everyone she works with, including me. The minute you meet Ms. Schooly, you know that she is a problem solver, a team player, and she has a creativity and a drive that always makes things better. When you go through our hallways, you'll see students who were non-verbal just a few months ago, and all of a sudden, they're giving you fist bumps, they're appropriately greeting you, and it's really nice because it warms your heart, but when you think of everything that went into it, it's absolutely miraculous. But she is involved in so many facets of our school, it's astounding. She started the Cares Club after school, she sits on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and she's helped to start the Coffee Cabana and snack delivery programs at Timberlane, which also brighten my day. But she helps her PAL students to change schedule displays around the entire school, so everybody knows what day it is. We have our letter-day system. But in addition to everything listed, she's the co-creator of the Poof Club, and that stands for the Power of One Friend. And what Ms. Schooly has accomplished is one of the most beautiful things that I have seen in all of my years as an educator. She made it cool for our middle school students to be thoughtful, inclusive, and kind, and created a culture where eighth graders from all different backgrounds and ability levels love to spend time, play games with, and help our PAL students. When nominating Ms. Schooly for this award, one parent said, "The growth witnessed academically and socially, along with all of the skills developed from sixth grade to today, is remarkable. Ms. Schooly's understanding of our son, encouragement, thoughtful expectations, and commitment to positivity make every day in her classroom truly extraordinary." Now in eighth grade, he navigates TMS, school with independence, attends other classes, and participates on sports teams due to her encouragement and you-can-do-it attitude. He loves school, and he goes to school every day with excitement. Middle school years are difficult, but through his experiences in Ms. Schooly's class, he just feels welcomed and a part of the whole TMS community, and it reflects in his happiness. Her coworker and partner teacher said, "The Ms. Schooly makes me want to be better, a better teacher every day, and makes me believe that there's no child that we can't teach. She goes above and beyond, always." Ms. Schooly is a bright light that illuminates our entire school, and I am extremely proud and excited to celebrate her as this year's Timberlane Governor/Educator of the Year.
And last but not least, Ms. Riley from Central High School.
Good evening, and congratulations to all of our recipients, especially the outstanding Mrs. Michelle Brennan, who is the HVCHS Governor/Educator of the Year. Mrs. Brennan is an incredibly talented special education teacher who has been a member of the HVCHS staff since 2015. During that time, she has worked extensively with our Academic Essentials Program, which is designed specifically to assist students with academic, communication, and social challenges to reach their highest possible level of achievement and independence. Mrs. Brennan's connection with the Academic Essentials students extends far beyond that of a typical educator. As one of her colleagues stated, she is their mentor, their advisor, their guide, caretaker, friend, therapist, coach, and boss, but most importantly, she is their teacher. Let's be honest, she has one of the most unique job descriptions I have ever seen. In what other job would you need? To assist students making waffles at the quarterly wake-up waffle event, corral dozens of general education and special education students in a gym playing Unified Basketball, dance at the senior prom, try to anticipate the often unanticipated needs of her students, all while delivering content in multiple subject areas at varying levels, with patience, with humor, with kindness, and with grace. Mrs. Brennan's commitment to the Academic Essentials program is evident both in and out of the classroom. Not only does she develop innovative and creative lessons in every subject, but she also co-advises the Unified Club, organizes class outings to various school events, and serves as a staff representative to the Strive PTO. She was also instrumental in the HVCHS being named a Unified Champion School this year, and she participated in the dancing there as well. Mrs. Brennan's support and advocacy for her students has no limits, and it is truly a pleasure to recognize her as the HVCHS Governor's Educator of the Year.
This evening, we are also honoring three support staff professionals from Hopewell Valley for their hard work and dedication to the District. Eligible candidates included paraprofessionals, secretaries, custodians, maintenance workers, bus drivers, van attendants, campus safety officers, and the Technology Department. A committee consisting of myself, the Director of Facilities, Director of Pupil Services, Director of Transportation, and other support professionals reviewed nominations and selected individuals based on the following criteria: Dedication to their job, they are inspiring, and they are making a difference in the lives of the staff, parents, and students with which they work. I know he was excited to speak earlier, so let's bring Dr. Bertell back to the podium from Hopewell Elementary.
Thank you again, and good evening once again. Again, I have the pleasure of informing you that Ms. Bonnie Brown has been recognized as the Support Staff Professional of the Year. Ms. Brown has been at Hopewell Valley Regional School District since 1999. She has supported various settings, but most importantly, the last 12 years in our preschool classroom, which we like to call Peach. Ms. Brown, as our Peach sometimes call her, Nurse Bonnie, and she actually is a registered nurse, by the way, right? As you'll hear a little bit later. Again, I could go on and talk about how she differentiates on the spot with academic modifications, or how she knows when to offer verbal prompts or physical assistance, but I choose to use one of her colleague's examples noted in her nomination, since her number-one job, and our number-one job as educators, is to keep our children safe, especially our tiniest learners, whose parents are always the most nervous when dropping them off to school, allowing those little hands to slip away from their hands to a trusted adult. So here we go. We feel safe knowing when Ms. Bonnie is around. She's always there to provide an ice pack from the freezer when a child falls down, or a Band-Aid from my desk when a child scrapes their knee. She gives hugs and TLC when our preschoolers are sad or afraid. She is a counselor when a child misses their mommy, or when the fire drill alarm is too loud, because it is loud. Or an open arms and spacious lap that provides our children with comfort and a calm space to feel safe. She loves each and every one of our students as if they were her very own grandchildren, and the parents of the preschoolers know that. They know their child is in good hands when Ms. Bonnie is there, and as a principal and a parent of three, that is certainly all that anyone could ask for. So again, these are just some of the wonderful many attributes of Nurse Bonnie that she's brought to not only our classrooms, but Hopewell Elementary School. And to top it off, she might be Nurse Bonnie, but she's a huge Philadelphia sports fan. All right, so she's gonna be enjoying many Philly games as she retires, unfortunately, at the end of this year. But once again, Nurse Bonnie, thank you for everything you do for Hopewell Elementary School.
I'd like to welcome back Ms. Nicole Jean Freddie from Stony Brook.
Good evening again, and it is my honor and privilege to introduce you to Ms. Courtney Leonard, our Support Professional of the Year at Stony Brook. They say the way you see a child is the way you treat them, the way you treat them is what they will become. And Ms. Leonard sees and treats all of our students as superstars, which is what they always rise to be. Courtney has worked in a variety of classroom settings, but regardless of where she is, she makes a huge impact on our students. Joining the Stony Brook community in 2007, Ms. Leonard has worked with students with academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and medical challenges, handling each child with a very individualized approach. She is such an asset to the Stony Brook community with a positive relationship with everyone she interacts with. She has the ability to connect with even the most challenging students. As one nomination stated, "Her mindfulness and positive self-talk strategies are effective and extremely useful. She's been a resource to just about every teacher in our school. She's passionate about promoting self-awareness, cultural awareness, and academic success with all students she encounters. Our students and staff at Stony Brook are blessed to have her. Outside of our little community, she works as the Program Director of the Before and After School Programs and the Summer Enrichment, Each Child Value located in Lawrenceville, where she plans activities for at-risk students before school, including breakfast and after school. It's a highly impactful program for many at-risk students, and I know it's a dream of hers to bring it here in Hopewell Valley. As one nomination stated, "Courtney is contributing extensively to the social-emotional well-being of the students, clearing the pathway for learning. Her magical approach is making a difference in the students and her coworkers' lives." So please join me, and thank you, Ms. Courtney Leonard.
And finally, Mr. Jay Billy from Bear Tavern.
Back again. I'm honored this evening, and Bear Tavern is honored to present Mr. Ronald Buchanan as the HVRC Educational Service Professional of the Year. Mr. Buchanan serves as our School Safety Officer at Bear Tavern. He has exhibited unparalleled dedication to ensuring the safety and security of those on our campus and throughout the district. His presence and dedication to safety for all those at our school is exhibited daily by his ability to be everywhere and do anything that is necessary at our school. Mr. Buchanan is able to connect with students and staff and balances responsibility for safety, continues to impress and amaze those around us. He's invested in our school and our students at a level that is hard to find in most professionals. He creates educational opportunities for our students, but also connects with each student at individual levels. Depending on the day, you might find Mr. Buchanan doing any number of things: setting up, taking down cones in the morning for arrival and departure, or at the end of the day for arrival and departure, moving signs, walking the grounds, checking doors, running safety drills, or talking to classrooms and students about safety, helping parents bring supplies in and out of the building, supporting students and staff at the playground or at outdoor areas. Many of the things that you don't see and sometimes might fall outside his realm of safety and security. He's helping the custodians and teachers set up or straighten up classrooms for assemblies, monitoring the lunchroom and playground, picking up debris from storms, walking the grounds and picking up things that need to be cleaned, helping students with their work in the classroom or in the hallway, walking with students who need a break or just need to talk, helping teachers set up for events, refereeing soccer games on the playground or teaching soccer skills specifically to support good sportsmanship, and so many more things. We are very lucky to have Mr. Buchanan at Bear Tavern. We are very lucky to have Mr. Buchanan at Bear Tavern. Mr. Buchanan embodies the essence of professionalism, dedication, and compassion. He is leaving an indelible mark on our school and community, and for that, we are very grateful. Thank you.
So congratulations to all of our honorees this evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do for our district. Thank you for that little break in the moment. We wouldn't be the same without you. We would like to take a picture, so if we could just take a few-minute break and have I'm gonna go ahead and turn things over to Dr. Treese for the superintendent's report. all of our recipients meet outside, we'd like to take a picture of everyone.
Thank you. Hopefully, I'm gonna step back so you can see my presentation here. I'm gonna quickly go through these slides, because we have a very full agenda, talking about budget today, but I wanted to just hit you up to date on some of the things that are going on in the district, and answer questions about kindergarten paras, because I know that there was a lot to comment on online. I want to give a shout-out to all of our Green Team, our students, our teachers, our communities, and partners, that they... These are just some of the hundreds of pictures that we have circulated to the district of the great things that we had going on during our Green Week. Some of those things included guest speakers from outside of our district. Actually, Brown Girl Green, I think, was zooming in from another state, I think California is where she is, and she presented to our students online, but then she came physically to the building to meet with high schoolers, had lunch. We had representatives from people from Free and Open Space, OEA, the Outdoor Equity Alliance, a lot of our community partners came out and helped plant things with our students, pollinators, to reestablish some of our outdoor gardens, just a lot of interesting things going on. We had fairs in some of the schools, so just a lot of exciting things going on. And you'll note that Ms. Murphy decided to come check out our... The first lady decided to come check out her stuff that was going on at Hopewell Elementary. She could've seen beautiful things at any of our schools, but Hopewell's schedule just aligned to her visit, and we were supposed to have the Commissioner of Education, but he couldn't make it. He was quite busy, but maybe he'll be able to join us in the future for other things. So I just wanted to shout out and thank everyone. They did a beautiful job making sure that we had lots of activities for Green Week. There we go. We also had our last meeting of the strategic planning work that we've done as a community. These are the six areas that the community decided we needed to work on. At this time, I'm working with my leadership team to develop action steps that are in the spirit of all of these categories. Student learning and autonomy was number one, getting our students to be more self-sufficient, lifelong learners that have an intrinsic motivation to learn, so that's number one. Number two is fiscal responsibility, and also taking care of our very aged facilities, and also capturing some of the green work that our sustainability teams have been working on for years. There's a whole plan that will just be for that. Health and wellness for students, staff, and family members. They want us to continue to do work with not just our students, making sure our staff are mentally and physically getting the work that they need to know how to be healthy, but also providing supports to the greater community. Communication, we heard loud and clear that we have a lot, too much, consolidate. We even had some folks offer services on how can we target communication so you kind of don't get lost in the many newsletters, links, postings that we have out there. How do we make sure that we're reaching you with our messages? They want us to form more community partnerships with businesses, with organizations, continuing to do the great work that we do in that area. And finally, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the facilitator was quite disgusted that we had more than five, but I told him, "Well, of course, we're gonna have more than five." So continue to have specific goals around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So the strategic planning page, there's a link to this slide deck that will be... You don't have to go to it right now, but I have the hot link here, so when you can go back to the agenda, you can see all of the information, the discussion, and the specifics about each one of these categories. May 20th, we'll be presenting the action step plans, the synopsis of what it looks like for the next five years, and then each year, we'll be working on ticking off some of these things and really have a focused path moving forward. They really did validate a lot of the work that we're already doing, and also gave us some great ideas about how we can stand upon these things. So I thank the community for coming, it was great conversation, and we couldn't have done that without your help, so thank you. Referendum webinar. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about the budget, which is separate from the referendum. I know there's lots of questions out here about this, so on May 16th, I will have a virtual webinar for you. There will be time for Q&amp;A, there will be other in-person options, but with May being as jam-packed as it is, I'm doing it virtually so I can access as many people as possible, because I know you're all terribly busy running around this time of year. And we're also gonna record this, so if you can't make it because you have higher commitments, we will record it. So I'm gonna be sending out the registration link for this, and there's also gonna be a landing page on our website, just like we had for the strategic planning, where all of these videos will be posted, frequently asked questions, any questions that come up during the webinar or outside of the webinar, and in visits that we have as we have visits going along between now and September. So just mark "Save the Date," and again, if you can't make it, don't worry, I will record it for you. And you can send me your questions along, so we can try to cover those as well during that night. So finally, I want to talk about kindergarten paras, because I know that there's been a lot of buzzing online that started from an anonymous post, right? We are not eliminating kindergarten paras. What I am doing is consolidating, and I'll tell you what that means in a minute. I'm not getting rid of kindergarten teachers, I can't get rid of any kindergarten paras that are aligned to IEPs, we would never do that, or behavioral needs of students, because they're not always linked to an IEP. But if a student needs a one-to-one para, if a para needs to be in a room because of the type of student populations we have, then that's the case. For example, we have a kindergarten class that's only two students in it. There are three adults in that room, because that's what's needed for that particular room, right? So we're not doing that. Our class size, the largest class section, and there's a couple of these, maybe there's three sections with 22 kids in them, most of the sections are 17, 18, or 19 in class size. We don't have any kindergarten classes above 22. Somebody fact-checked me, and they were right. We do have one fifth-grade class in the whole district that's at 25, and that's going to happen, that has always happened, where we have an anomaly, and a class section kind of jumps up to a 25, and we just ride it out for the course of the year because it is an anomaly. You don't want to add a staff member that's anomaly for one year, because that staff member's gonna be here. That's what usually happens historically, right? We keep them after we add them. We don't ever take away. So those kindergarten paras that are not aligned to IEPs will be shared, meaning there will not be a class without a para professional in it that's a kindergarten para. What does that look like? I've asked my principals, that's why there isn't a big announcement to the community, to look at their schedules. It's a scheduling thing, it's not budgetary, not gonna reduce your budget, which I'll talk about in a minute. I said, "Look at the classrooms where you have three or four adults, because there's an inclusion class, there's an extra teacher, there's one or two one-to-one paras." That kindergarten para that's in that class can now be shared probably with another class that's similar, because you don't need six or seven people in a class at 17 or 18 all day. So can we schedule that person to be here in the morning when we're doing certain things, there in the afternoon? Get creative with your scheduling. Because right now, we are overstaffed with paras, to the point where we're so bottom-heavy with them, and kindergarten paras, which no other school in the Mercer County area does, because I've been surveying this for a while. They do not add just an extra kindergarten para until they get to 25 or more students. They still have IEP paras and paras for need, but they just don't add the bonus para like we do. So we would still be having that extra person, but they would be shared between classrooms where they already have a good number of adults in the room. So that will not change your experience for your students, you will still have kindergarten paras, but I have to start to save money. Bob's gonna go into the budget here in a little bit, and this is with every para that we already have on staff. It doesn't include any new ones we may add in the spring with IEP annual meetings, or a student that comes in at the end of the year that needs a para and that we're gonna honor, or a student that has an emergent issue that happens at the beginning of the year or over the summer, and we decide to add a para. I promise you, we will add them. If a class hits 24 or 25 and we're not comfortable with that, I'm gonna add another para in a kindergarten class, that's too large for me. I probably am gonna have to end up splitting the section and adding a teacher, because it's never going to just usually one person, it's a couple, three, and now I gotta split the section. That's why we have these 17s and 18s. We enjoy a very small class size, but that's what I have to do to try to maintain our budget, because we are going to grow. Here's the rest of it. As a district, we are very para-heavy, we have a lot of paras. We use them, we need them, they're great people. However, when we go to our budget meeting with the county executive superintendent, he questions us every year about the number we have, because we are kinda high. So I'm gonna be challenging my principals, my child study team, to make sure we are making... We're hiring people that we really need for students, and that we're always reevaluating that, because our goal, if you go back to that strategic plan, is to make sure students are autonomous at some point. We have to make sure that kids can go into their backpack and organize it, that they can tie their shoes, that they can do all these things by the time they get to the middle school. So we have to also start thinking about, just because a student has a para in kindergarten, they don't necessarily need that same para by seventh grade, right? We should hope that we're fading those paras when it's time, and that we're reassigning them where we need them. Because what we ran into this year with all of the extra paras that really, I would argue, aren't necessary all the time to have all these extra paras in the room, when you have so many adults in our classrooms supporting, that kept us from hiring paras that we needed for students that had emergent problems. We couldn't even find enough paras, because they were already assigned in places where we probably could've sacrificed a little bit, or tightened up our belts a little bit. So again, this is not gonna vastly change your experience, you're still gonna see these paras in the room. At some point, we may have to revisit this and go to like the other districts and say, "We're not doing it until we hit 25, we're not there yet." At that point, and before that point, I'm gonna be leaning on the community to say, which is what other districts do, "We may need parents who are stay-home moms or dads that wanna come in and be room parents and help out." That's how other districts do that, and that's something that also came up in the strategic planning, that you all want to have more access to the buildings like you used to in the past. That's gonna take some sacrifice on your part, because you have to be fingerprinted and all the things to make sure that you're safe to be in our building. But we're gonna have to start thinking creatively, because we cannot keep doing what we've been doing and just throwing a human at it, and that's not always allowing us to maintain the programs that we would like to maintain. So I just wanted to clear that up, because all the folks that are here will still be here, probably gonna still bring in more, but I'm just trying to keep the number down as best we can. We stopped digging that hole in the budget that we've been digging. Okay, so the last slide, I think. So again, the final thing is, I appreciate, I got a lot of emails finally, after this was blowing up online for a while. If there's ever any question about any of this, please reach out, because sometimes what, well, a lot of times what happens online, is something is not factual, or it's just partial information, or it's just plain inaccurate, and it starts getting circulated, and it starts to become truth because it's out there. People are getting very upset about something that is probably not gonna affect them in the way that they think. So please reach out anytime you have a question, and believe me, now is not the time to get mad, there will be plenty of opportunities in the future as we talk about this budget, because we are gonna have to have some real deep conversations about cutting, and next year, I probably will be saying, "I'm cutting some stuff that you really care about, but I have to to save other things that we really care about." So we'll save more about that when we get into the budget. So thank you. But if a student needs a one-to-one para, if a para needs to be in a room because of the type of student populations we have, then that's the case. For example, we have a kindergarten class that's only two students in it. There are three adults in that room, because that's what's needed for that particular room, right? So we're not doing that. Our class size, the largest class section, and there's a couple of these, maybe there's three sections with 22 kids in them. Most of the sections are 17, 18, or 19 in class size. We don't have any kindergarten classes above 22. Somebody fact-checked me, and they were right. We do have one fifth-grade class in the whole district that's at 25. And that's going to happen, that has always happened, where we have an anomaly, and a class section kind of jumps up to a 25, and we just ride it out for the course of the year because it is an anomaly. You don't want to add a staff member that's anomaly for one year, because that staff member is going to be here. That's what usually happens historically, right? We keep them after we add them. We don't ever take away. So those kindergarten paras that are not aligned to IEPs will be shared, meaning there will not be a class without a para professional in it that's a kindergarten para. What does that look like? I've asked my principals, that's why there isn't a big announcement to the community, to look at their schedules. It's a scheduling thing. It's not budgetary, not going to reduce your budget, which I'll talk about in a minute. I said, "Look at the classrooms where you have three or four adults, because there's an inclusion class, there's an extra teacher. There's one or two one-to-one paras." That kindergarten para that's in that class could now be shared probably with another class that's similar, because you don't need six or seven people in a class at 17 or 18 all day. So can we schedule that person to be here in the morning when we're doing certain things, there in the afternoon? Get creative with your scheduling. Because right now, we are overstaffed with paras, to the point where we're so bottom-heavy with them and kindergarten paras, which no other school in the Mercer County area does. Because I've been surveying this for a while. They do not add just an extra kindergarten para until they get to 25 or more students. They still have IEP paras and paras for need, but they just don't add the bonus para like we do. So we would still be having that extra person, but they would be shared between classrooms where they already have a good number of adults in the room. So that will not change your experience for your students. You will still have kindergarten paras. But I have to start to save money. Bob's going to go into the budget here in a little bit, and this is with every para that we already have on staff. It doesn't include any new ones we may add in the spring with IEP annual meetings, or a student that comes in at the end of the year that needs a para and that we're going to honor, or a student that has an emergent issue that happens at the beginning of the year or over the summer, and we decide to add a para. I promise you, we will add them. If a class hits 24 or 25 and we're not comfortable with that, I'm going to add another para in a kindergarten class. That's too large for me. I probably am going to have to end up splitting the section and adding a teacher, because it's never going to just usually one person. It's a couple, three, and now I got to split the section. That's why we have these 17s and 18s. We enjoy a very small class size, but that's what I have to do to try to maintain our budget, because we are going to grow. Here's the rest of it. As a district, we are very para-heavy. We have a lot of paras. We use them. We need them. They're great people. However, when we go to our budget meeting with the county executive superintendent, he questions us every year about the number we have, because we are kind of high. So I'm going to be challenging my principals, my child study team, to make sure we are making, we're hiring people that we really need for students and that we're always reevaluating that, because our goal, if you go back to that strategic plan, is to make sure students are autonomous at some point. We have to make sure that kids can go into their backpack and organize it, that they can tie their shoes, that they can do all these things by the time they get to the middle school. So we have to also start thinking about, just because a student has a para in kindergarten, they don't necessarily need that same para by seventh grade, right? We should hope that we're fading those paras when it's time and that we're reassigning them where we need them. Because what we ran into this year with all of the extra paras that really, I would argue, aren't necessary all the time to have all these extra paras in the room, when you have so many adults in our classrooms supporting, that kept us from hiring paras that we needed for students that had emergent problems. We couldn't even find enough paras, because they were already assigned in places where we probably could have sacrificed a little bit or tightened up our belts a little bit. So again, this is not going to vastly change your experience. You're still going to see these paras in the room. At some point, we may have to revisit this and go to like the other districts and say, "We're not doing it until we hit 25. We're not there yet." At that point, and before that point, I'm going to be leaning on the community to say, which is what other districts do. We may need parents who are stay-home moms or dads that want to come in and be room parents and help out. That's how other districts do that, and that's something that also came up in the strategic planning, that you all want to have more access to the buildings like you used to in the past. That's going to take some sacrifice on your part, because you have to be fingerprinted and all the things to make sure that you're safe to be in our building. But we're going to have to start thinking creatively, because we cannot keep doing what we've been doing and just throwing a human at it. And that's not always allowing us to maintain the programs that we would like to maintain. So I just wanted to clear that up, because all the folks that are here will still be here, probably going to still bring in more, but I'm just trying to keep the number down as best we can. We stopped digging that hole in the budget that we've been digging. Okay, so the last slide, I think. So again, the final thing is, I appreciate, I got a lot of emails finally, after this was blowing up online for a while. If there's ever any question about any of this, please reach out, because sometimes, well, a lot of times, what happens online is something is not factual, or it's just partial information, or it's just plain inaccurate. And it starts getting circulated, and it starts to become truth, because it's out there. And people are getting very upset about something that is probably not going to affect them in the way that they think. So please reach out anytime you have a question. And believe me, now is not the time to get mad. There will be plenty of opportunities in the future as we talk about this budget, because we are going to have to have some real deep conversations about cutting. And next year, I probably will be saying, "I'm cutting some stuff that you really care about, but I have to to save other things that we really care about." So we'll save more about that when we get into the budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Therese. Okay, moving on.
So we come to the end of a long, long road for you board members. We started in July, starting to talk about budget. We're here tonight for the final adoption of our budget. This is where we were in our first presentation, obviously, September, when we're at the end of April, for final adoption. Okay, just revisiting what went into the board's decision-making when we built the budget. We wanted to reflect the mission statement that we have been using. It was critical to maintain all of our services, continue our academic programs, curriculum revisions, and maintaining class sizes in that 18 to 23, 24 level throughout, meeting all of our contractual obligations that we have to all of our staff members, continue to evaluate and flex our budget based upon what's going on in the district. And again, developing a budget that prepares us for that uncertain future that Dr. Therese just referred to. If you've been reading the papers around the state, listening or going on NewJersey.com, a lot of districts were hit with unexpected budget cuts or state aid reductions this year. Some received $8 million less, $20 million less, others received more. A lot of it is being driven on the value and the wealth in your communities. It may seem unfair, but that's the way they're doing it right now. East Brunswick, for example, lost $8 million just because that the wealth in their community, the property values in their community grew tremendously in that last calendar year. They didn't expect to lose $8 million. They expected to gain about $1 million and a half. So they actually wound up cutting 51 positions. I get nervous for us. We have new developments coming in that will increase the value of our community. So we need to start to look at our budgets going forward, and that's what we tried to do this year. We don't know what the future is going to hold regarding state aid. It's not a huge part of our budget, but it is a part. We need to be prepared going forward for that. These are the main things that drove our budget in the past year. Inflation, I had a discussion with Mr. Resnick and Mr. Peters at the end of last budget cycle, and I thought that we would be in a down period of inflation. I thought it would reduce a little bit, and it just hasn't. It continues to climb. Our supply accounts have been drained somewhat due to increased costs of those. The services that we're paying for have not come down. And energy is energy. I'll see that the gas is now rising yet again, approaching $4 a gallon in some places. Again, it's those kinds of things that are driving our budget. Curriculum instruction, we are, again, we are in that mode of constantly redeveloping, renewing our curricula, both on our own and as mandates from the state of New Jersey. I think, what's the most recent one? Is this the ELA, the language arts ones that are coming out and that we have to implement by September? So again, things that we have to handle. Transportation is another huge one. That budget continues to grow. This year, the increase for contracted transportation routes was 5.81%, almost 6%. That is a state-driven number. The state says, "This is what the contracts minimally can go up by the contractors." You can say no, they will reject the contract. So we have to either go along with it or go out to bid again and see if they don't come in higher. But again, dealing with that. I was talking to Dr. Therese and President Galliano. The cost of an athletic bus run, to take a team from Hopewell to West Windsor for a baseball game, used to be about $250 to $300 a trip. They're $725 a trip now. Per bus, per day. We run five to eight buses per day, including the weekends, and we do them on the weekends ourselves. But again, the increase in the cost of those things, that's triple what it used to be, you know, pre-COVID. Insurance, obviously, everybody sees that the medical insurance industry right now is skyrocketing with costs. Property and casualty insurance costs have increased, as well as workers' comp. Our workers' comp budget used to be somewhere in the area of $225,000. It's now over $750,000 for workers' comp insurance that we must carry. Okay, so again, another cost driver. And remember, we have a 2% cap. All these things are way over 2%. Facility maintenance, we have, Dr. Therese referenced our referendum. We have a referendum coming up. It's more money than we ever thought we would have to ask. We do as much as we can in-house. We have our maintenance facility guys on our roofs, in our crawl spaces, fixing HVAC equipment, roofing work. These are projects that just are outside of our control. You can't continue to patch roofs and tinker with HVAC systems that are 20, 25 years old. You just can't do it anymore. Special education, we love our special education kids. We have great programs in-house. You know, credit to Ms. Donardo and what she's doing. There's a cost to it. And we're running higher than we've run in years past post-COVID. It is what it is. It's a national trend that's going on, but it's a huge driver to our budget. Again, special ed tuition costs by our outside providers increasing at 10% and greater. And the thing with that is, they give you a tuition, and all it will say is, come September, they go, "Oh, you know that tuition we gave you? It wasn't high enough." And they can just add to it. So we're dealing with that. Staffing, we just talked about paras in some ways, but we are constantly looking and having to add staff due to students that come in. We may have a special education student comes in, we need a staff member. We may have additional students coming in in fourth grade. For some reason, at Bear Tavern, there's an influx of students. If we get above a certain level, we have to split the section and add another teacher. Happens all the time. The cost of that staffing is getting very high. We no longer have been able to hire staff at level one. We are now hiring, staff members have the ability now to negotiate. I've got a job here, here, and here. Who's going to pay me more money? Before, they used to be, "I'm so happy to have a job. Whatever you want to pay me is fine." Not so anymore. Technology, we've all seen how technology has influenced almost everything we do. You can't even get a thermostat in your house anymore that's not be hooked to your wireless. You know, whatever happened to the old, good old analog ones, where you just turn the dial? But everything is technology now. Our technology staff is extremely taxed with everything, from the projectors we have in here to the wireless and all of our, believe it or not, fire smoke detectors. They're all addressable devices, so again, adds a cost to it. The anticipated growth in Hopewell Township, we're starting to see those houses being built, ground being broken, and we are starting to see students in our schools, both at Stony Brook, in the development that's on Bull Run Road, and coming into Bear Tavern from those developments over near Scotch Road. So it is a reality. It's coming, and we need to get ready for that. And again, another concern for me is the use of surplus in our budget. And what surplus means is it's a non-recurring revenue. It's a wild card. If we have savings that we generate at the end of each year, we roll that into next year's budget or into our capital reserve to do other facilities maintenance projects. But our use of surplus in our budget is climbing. It's close to $4 million. It's down a little from last year, but still a little bit too high for my taste. It means that if we don't generate surplus, then there's a hole in our budget. And we need to be careful with that, and that's what Dr. Therese was talking about in reducing and getting that level of surplus in our budget down. So you must say, "What have you done?" We had, we saw some questions coming through on Facebook recently, "Where is the money going?" Well, the money is going to the things we just mentioned, but we are doing some things to be more cost-effective. We are a self-insured entity here, which means that if we don't spend the money we allot for health benefits, we get to keep it. It doesn't go to the carrier. A lot of times, you pay premium, and whether you utilize that money or not, they get to keep it. So that is something that over the last several years has saved us, conservative estimate, $3.5 million that we've been able to put back into the classroom. Again, special education, returning our students from high-cost out-of-district placements to stronger placements that we run on our own. We feel very confident that the programs we run are equal to or better than what is out there. We try to reduce staff when possible without affecting class size greatly. It coincides with enrollment. Again, we're in a period now of leveled-off enrollment, looking towards growing. So what does that mean? We may have to start to add some of that staff that we've held down for years, and it may start to creep back up. We do have a school choice program. It's our Performing Arts Academy, where we bring in 13 students from other districts in the state, and they get money for that. And somewhere in the area of $325,000 that helps to offset our own programs. Again, technology, we've done everything from moving away from higher-cost Apple computers, Google environment, which a lot of the software is at no cost to the district, and doing things with our servers and storage that has gotten us away from higher-cost options. But our technology continues to move in a more positive direction. We do everything we can to purchasing groups, joint purchasing with many districts in the state. We are in a consortium with over 500 school districts to purchase the joint purchase energy. Most of the supplies and equipment that we purchase are on state or national co-ops that have been pre-bid, so we don't have to spend the time and the energy to do something that somebody else has already done. And we have several different co-ops we can bounce off of one another, all in the effort of saving money. Same thing with technical and professional services. If we don't bid them ourselves, we look for other groups who have already done this for us, so we think and believe that we are getting the most bang for our dollar by utilizing these types of cooperative purchasing arrangements. And again, utilizing our facilities department to do as many of the replacements and in-house work as we can. If you go out, anybody knows that if you go out to a contractor in the community, you may pay more than if you did it yourself. It's the same basic philosophy that we have. We have hired highly skilled individuals who can do that work and save us that money. And actually, we get a better return, because they can work almost immediately instead of waiting for someone to come in and say, "We can't get there for two or three weeks." Those are some of the things we've done to control costs. Again, this list has come up there. These are some of the things that we've identified as potential cost savings items. These are things we don't want to do. There are a lot of what makes Hopewell what it is. Our comprehensive high school, our teaming at the middle school, all of those things, while common to some other schools, are in some ways nice to have. A lot of districts have done away with teaming at the middle school. They've done away with the comprehensive high school. They've done away with AP classes, and they've held the ones that have the most enrollment. We have such a wide variety of courses of study that other schools just don't have. Right. Yeah, the discussion was whether or not we charge some athletic fees. Yeah, we're not cutting.
Thanks, yeah. For those of you who are watching online, I'm just pointing out the very last bullet at the very end. There's an incomplete sentence. We did not ever consider elimination of all athletics. We considered athletic fees, and we're not recommending those, but athletics was.
Good catch on that one. All right. So again, if doing those kinds of cuts, again, it hinders our ability to address our building repairs. It can affect the offerings that we have, our co-curricular activities, all those things that we hold and value in the district. Those cuts would impact that. And that's, again, as we move forward, you know, our budget, and again, I start at 12 o'clock on our dial there with our athletics and co-curricular department and wind it all the way around till a little after 9 o'clock. That's where our money is going. It's going to the staff and benefits of those who are educating your children and the children in the district. The other areas are more essential service-type things, but all go into their education. But the direct, you know, the direct pieces that go directly to the education is more than 75% of our budget and largely controlled. There's not a whole lot we can do with those types of costs. These are appropriations. We're looking at around a 2% increase in total spending. Our operating expenses are up about 5% based upon largely all those drivers that we talked about. The savings coming in in our capital outlay budget, we are doing less capital outlay work this summer, because we are planning on a referendum and will be tackling those things next summer. These are where our revenues come from. We are a tax levy-heavy school district. We'll talk about the percentages later, but that is increasing at 2.6% this year. You can see we're using less fund balance, which is happy. I'm happy that we're using less. It's still quite high. Comparably, I'd like to see that drop as the years progress. But we are getting less federal aid. We are no longer a Title I school district. We have budgeted a mechanism to continue those programs within the budget next year. And our state aid has increased, but still, it's less than 10% of our budget. So while it helps to get that, it's not a huge driver in where our dollars come from. You want to get yelled at?
What Title I is, for those who don't know, it's the number, you get the funds based on the number of students that you have identified that getting free and reduced lunch. And our numbers weren't large enough this year for us to get those funds. Again, it's not a large amount, but we used it for enrichment for our students, all students. It doesn't have to just be Title I. We write the grant so that any student that is not performing at grade level has access to these things. But we didn't get that money, so we had to find in the budget where we were going to maintain that, because we care about that. Other title funds that we are going to get probably a little less of, Title II and Title IV, we use to do things like the staff member that we have from Rutgers, some of that was being grant monies, bringing in guest speakers and other programs that support our students and professional development for our teachers.
So again, going back to our revenue slides, 92% of the budget is funded by local funds, state funds, 7%, and the federal government gives us about 1%. Again, the IDEA funds go to support our special ed program, all the tuitions that we have, and the titles there, we're not getting Title I. So again, 92% of the budget is funded by local sources. This is where we are for next year. We have a 2.7% increase to our taxes and an overall tax levy increase of 2.6%. And this is just that slide enumerating our use of surplus. We'd like to get that down somewhere near the area of 2% to 2.5 million surplus. Again, the best use of surplus is non-recurring expenses. If we can apply it to projects and things that we aren't going to see year after year, that's the best use of it. We are using that money this year for recurring expenses, so before we even start to build the budget next year, we got to find $4 million to plug the hole. That's exactly what it means. Lastly, this is what the dollar amounts equal. It's a 3 cent increase to Hopewell Borough, 5 cent increase to Hopewell Township, 10% for 10 cents to Pennington Borough. For an overall amount for $100 of assessed value, we've got $1.85, $1.80, and $1.86 respectively. The number on the end is the average household, what the means of the average household means to those boroughs. The average houses range from, in all the boroughs, the average is about $450,000 on the average. That brings us to the end. We'll take questions from the board, and then we'll open it up to the public for that.
I was looking for the presentation. There's the ones that were given as we were building the budget. Just wanted to make sure that this one is available.
This will be, this presentation will be posted there and also on board docs.
Anyone else? John?
I think we're on now.
Yeah, you're on.
Okay, good. I just, I don't want anyone to come in here and turn my mic on for me like that before Alex. I just, I don't want anyone to come in here and turn my mic on for me like that before Alex. I just wanted to say, I know that we're bringing the STEM facilitator positions back in the elementary level. And I just want to commend you for that, that, you know, we're aging out of elementary on our side. But I know, at Hopewell in particular, the position that we had in the past there was so meaningful to so many different students and families that I just wanted to commend you all on that. And, you know, really appreciate your work to bring that program back to the school district.
Anyone else? There is one note about, if you can go back to the things that we've. So one of the things I think I'll say to the board and then also to the community is that this list is going to ever change. Like, we, as a board, challenged the school administration to continue to look at this list. Though there are no recommendations to take action on these, I do want to convey to the community that these might be impacted with nuance, right? So when we say eliminating all paras, that's actually not factually true. But we challenged the administration to manage a very complex schedule, multiple buildings. And while it's hard to articulate to the community all of those factors, please note that this board isn't looking at this unilaterally, right? We never say, "Go take that off" or "Stop doing X or Y." When we talk about the number of programs that we have, the number of clubs we have, the athletic, the different teams that we have, we're always going to look at it holistically, but then also try to add nuance so that the budget can be impacted, right? So we understand what you value, and I love that we had the strategic sessions this year because it really helps inform what you, as a community, think is important, right? And we also know that the financial pressures in your households don't go away. So we are acutely sensitive to all those things. So I'm just asking for you, not grace, but if you hear any unilateral decisions out there in the general population, please bring those to us because that's never the case. We would never just slash courtesy busing without a massive conversation about how many buses do we really need? How many kids are actually on those buses, right? So I'm just advocating for grace with our administration because we are challenging them hard because we have a huge hurdle to go find $4 million. And that's not an easy thing when we have a district like ours with aging buildings and what, etc. So thank you for the administration for taking our direction to challenge our spending. And as a community, please note that there is nuance to every single change that is recommended with high, high sensitivity to the quality of education and the experience of our family and children. So that's it. All right. With that said.
Public comment first.
Okay, at this time, we are going to open for public comment on the budget only. Thank you. Members of the public are invited to address the board on the public comment for the budget only for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
And just so people know, I'm your friendly timekeeper. You will have three minutes. At 2.5 minutes, I will show you the yellow. And then at 3 minutes, I will show you the red.
Can everyone hear me? Awesome, perfect. My name is Jean Silva. I have one son in Abert Tavern and one incoming Abert Tavern starting next year. My question, I think, is simple. I don't think I'll need three minutes. I've looked up other school districts. There's a, like, easy-to-find budget that I can pull up to understand where costs are going. I tried to look that up for our district this afternoon. I wasn't able to find it. I guess, but like previous years, I've been able to find, like, West Windsor, I looked up. I could see, like, all previous years. The reason I ask is budgets, as always, as we've been talking about throughout the evening, it's all about trade-offs and constraints. I completely understand that. I'm asking at Abert Tavern, the roof at the library has been leaking since spring break. Longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. And again, I understand that we're trying to make tough decisions. I think just like a publicly facing budget would really help understand in full transparency, understand if that's not being fixed, is the money being spent somewhere else? And to understand what's going on. Absolutely.
And if you could just write your name on the book there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, I'm Catherine Former-Hogan, and I'm a resident of Hopewell Township. I just have a question about the courtesy busing. If you could offer some clarification there about what specifically that is? Because I know there's hazardous busing, there's courtesy busing, and I just, I know that that's, right? That's not happening right now, but it's a consideration. And I think it would be helpful to receive some clarification on what we define as courtesy busing.
Anyone else? Okay. With that. Oh, okay. Go ahead. Oh, okay. No, no, it's okay. Sorry, dude.
So my name is Marion Labos. I live at 10 Model Avenue in Hopewell Borough. And Dr. Treese, I'd just like to thank you for your more nuanced discussion about the kindergarten paraprofessionals. I think you, many of you may have figured out that it's an issue that's near and dear to many of your parents of your youngest students, our paraprofessionals. In fact, my paraprofessional is in this audience right now. And I think all of the parents in my class would, yeah, it all exists to think that the next year she might not be as embedded in the classroom as she is right now. I do understand that you need to balance all your costs. I mean, that's kind of a terrifying thing to have to do to keep all of our wonderful programs running. But, I mean, our kindergarten is, it's a universal investment in all of our students. Every single one of our students, they go through this. And the incredible achievements of our high school students, they have their roots in our elementary schools. I went to the YES presentation on the Climate Action Plan, and so many of those students, like, they came out of our elementary schools. But I also want to go and say thank you for reinstating the STEM educators because so many of those students came from Hopewell Elementary, and they had worked with Helen so closely. And you could see the direct impact that one educator made on so many students to give up so much free time to come up with that plan. It was, it was very meaningful. But I'm also one of the parents that went to the strategic planning meetings, and I have a great interest in making sure our children spend more time outdoors, learning both in nature and about nature. And I think we all know that getting kindergartners outside is tricky. You know, even as we're trying to give them independence, you know, there's jackets, there's distractions, and sometimes that extra adult body can be the thing that really helps get them out there. So just thank you for all the work that you're doing for our students and.
Anyone else?
Okay. We have a few responses we can give as well as some support with the website URL with the budget.
And we can also work with our tech department to add a button. I know there's lots of buttons here, but we probably can add a button there at the bottom somewhere. Here, budget. No, this website's not, it's hard to navigate.
Right on the menu here. Go to the menu. This here. Right. You're looking for this budget? This is what West Windsor has posted. Now. I mean, this is. So it's, but yeah, it has to go up after the public here. It actually can't go up before that because I have to hit a button and it releases that document. Yeah, that'll be up. So the, it's confusing. The difference between courtesy busing and hazardous busing is when a student does not have safe passage under 2.5 miles for secondary, under 2 miles for K to 8. If there is not safe passage, meaning there's no sidewalks, we provide transportation at no charge. So we do that now. Courtesy busing is when there is safe passage within 2.5 or 2 miles. We don't have to offer it. We do offer it at a subsidized rate. So that's what we do now. That's when people pay for busing. That's courtesy busing, and they're paying a portion of the cost.
We raised that a little bit. The elementary school was always paying, parents were paying more than the middle and high school. We raised it so it was at parity. I think we charged 500.
Right.
For a student. We pay more than that for a student.
The average cost of a seat on one of our buses is over $1,100.
Right. And so part of the thing that we have to discuss as a district, again, President William Galliano brought this up. The discussion we'll have before we go there is a lot of times, when I'm in the bus, watching buses in the morning and in the afternoon, there are cars lined up, causing a traffic jam, picking up and dropping off. And my buses are running empty because people want these seats, but then they don't use them. So having a real conversation about if you're driving, do you really need the seat? Well, I might need the seat, but then that could be like, the three less buses we have to contract at, how much a bus to contract?
$80,000.
$80,000, right? We could save $80,000 if we can run less buses if we're not running full buses. And that gets worse as the year goes on when kids start participating in sports where the afternoon run is empty. So if we can think about if we're carpooling, if we are dropping off and picking up because they have all their stuff, we know how it is, or they're late, or all the things. But literally, these buses are not running at capacity either. So we can, there's some tweaks we can make to save us from doing that for the person that really does need to put their child on the bus and use that courtesy busing. So we'll have all those conversations. We'll survey you. We'll try to make the tweaks before we make the deep cuts so that we don't have to make them.
And to be clear, not running at full capacity could be five. Right, so we're not even talking half-capacity. So there is a conversation out there to look at how many students are on the bus and make sure we're understanding what's the real.
And we do, we do oversubscribe our buses to account for those who don't ride and they're, yeah.
Yeah, so we have.
They're still running, they're still running below capacity.
Yeah, and we can only do so much of that because if there is a true evacuation and we have to put kids on a bus, we have to make sure we don't oversubscribe to the point where we can't accommodate that.
Could I ask a question? Just off of that really quickly, just the paraprofessional piece, just a question. You know, obviously, we were just there with the First Lady, which was terrific. And, you know, understanding as you're sort of implementing, and the principals are sort of implementing these plans in their facilities, you know, will there be an opportunity maybe in the future that you might, you know, maybe there might be situations, you know, to revisit the, you know, sort of the new staffing, if you will, to, you know, there might be opportunities to revisit in the future. I just, you know, thought I would raise that. Because as an example, you know, Hopewell Elementary mentioned that, obviously, near and dear to my heart as well. And, you know, when you're out working with the pollinators, as an example, that's a long stretch. And, you know, I don't think you want to have a whole kindergarten class perhaps by themselves. So I just, I just wanted to raise that, see if there might be an opportunity.
And there would never, no, I understand. There would never, and I forgot to answer Ms. Labos' question. We, again, there will be no classroom without paras. And right now, when you go into some of our kindergarten classes and a lot of classes at the elementary level, you might go in and see more adults sometimes than kids as they're getting pulled out and those sorts of things. When we have days like when the First Lady comes or we're outside or we're doing those walks, we make sure that we have enough people to cover those buildings. We have our paras, we have parent volunteers that come in on those days, the administrators come in on all those days. We make sure that we circle the wagons and that we have students covered. And believe me, there's more than enough adults in these classrooms, and they will continue to be. We just have to be a little bit smarter about it. Adding the STEM facilitators back and doing it with intention and making sure that we have curriculum that's consistent K to 5 for every student. Every student didn't get to experience the STEM facilitators as they stood before. And they weren't teaching a consistent curriculum everywhere. So I love that everyone loves Ms. Corvaline, but I want that same conversation to be happening in each one of our schools, and I want them to be teaching not just about sustainability and being green, but what careers are out there, technology, because T is in there as well, right? Cross-content, talking about geography and how the way we impact the planet affects that and the earth. All of those things are going to be part of the program now. Food waste is a curriculum that we're going to be adopting as part of this program. And it'll be happening through all the grades in addition to the science that's already taught in the classroom. But there'll be a dedicated person with a dedicated curriculum. And the facilitators that we did add for English, Language Arts, and Math, which I'll report out at the end of the year, have made great strides. Our test scores are, we're going to see an improvement. We've seen an improvement in student performance. I can quantify how students are doing in math and language arts K to 5 right now. I couldn't say that before. So as I spend money, because I can spend money here in this district, I just want to make sure you're getting the most bang for your buck. And I knew you would be mad at me, but I knew I had to do this, and I couldn't do all the things I needed to do. So I had to take a pause, make a sacrifice, so I made sure that we did it right and with intention. So just like I'll revisit all of these things, I'll revisit this as well. But I think you're going to see that we're going to be fine with this one. I don't make knee-jerk decisions, and I've been thinking about this for a while. I think you're going to see that you're fine.
Go ahead, Alex.
So I had a couple. Bob, you pointed out the difference between courtesy and hazard busing. I also wanted to ask you to also make it clear what is mandated by the state. Not mandated by the state, right? It's not hazard busing, even though it's hazard. Am I correct that that's not mandated?
It's correct. Hazardous busing's not mandated. It's recommended highly that if you have students walking down.
Right, but not, but even that.
And all of our routes are reviewed by local law enforcement.
Another question I had, there was a question about the roof at Abert Tavern.
Yeah.
We knew about that roof. It wasn't a surprise to us. That's why it was so, the pictures that were circulated, that's why it was so carefully taped off and tarped so that nothing would get damaged in that facility. It took a while to find out where the leak was. If anybody knows anything about roof work, you can't find a leak when it's raining, right? And we had two full weeks of almost continuous rain while that roof was leaking. So they couldn't, our guys couldn't find it, and two professional roofing contractors couldn't find the leak until it actually stopped raining. Once it stopped raining, we found the leak, and we are working to repair it. As we said, to get a roofer on site, it was beyond the scope of our guys. It took a couple of weeks to get a roofer to come out because he was busy on some other jobs that he had. So we do everything we can in-house to try to attack roofs. Not a plug, but that roof is on the list of things that we are going out to referendum for. We will probably expect more leaks to happen as rain happens. It's just what happens to a 25-year-old roof. But we knew about it and we were doing everything we can to address it in a timely fashion. It just wasn't getting done because of the weather at that point. But we are aware of 98% of all of the things that are going wrong. Our staff is highly efficient at letting us know when there's a problem, which is a good thing. And we do the best we can to get things fixed as quickly as we can with the money that we have. Now, I would love to replace that roof now, but it's several million dollars to replace that roof. So at this point, patches are going to have to do until we hopefully get funds in-house to repair it permanently.
And that's one of many leaks we have going on in the district now. That one. The other one that's big that I'm worried about is happening in our brand-new Black Box Theater. We've had whole classrooms that have lost libraries and things like that because the water comes through. We desperately need to replace all these roofs, but we're quickly patching as quickly as we can when we finally find where the water's coming from. That's a fun job to patch it, but patch is not going to keep doing it. It's going to continue to be a problem. Especially when it's leaking over valuable items. Our pack is another place where it's leaking. So we have to really fix it.
And I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but I have to do this. But when, it's on, it's on. Even closer? I believe, okay, so, so it sounds like a broken record because Mark is not here. But when we started talking about the referendum because we needed to build expansions and that was, I think, last summer. The reason the Finance and Facility Committee then went back to the administration and said, let's just, if we're going to referendum anyway, let's start addressing these problems. It became pretty clear to us that in the regular budget with the limited CapEx funds that we have, capital improvement funds that we have, the only thing we can do is try and play, play Bakemole and chase problems after they show up, right? We don't want to do that. It's much more expensive. It's disruptive. We want to try and address at least the known issues before they show up, but we cannot do that out of.
Okay, we've cut, yeah. Anything else before? I need a first and second to approve the budget.
Motion.
Mr. Kapadia?
Yes.
Dr. Liliston?
Yes.
Dr. Lou? Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Slotman?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Genovasi?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Um, we, we implement the budget. We get prepared to start purchasing at an extra budget. We have to certify the result to the three municipalities and they sign off on the, what's called an A4F tax sheet. And once the tax sheets are signed, they go to the county office for the preparation of, of school tax.
No, it's not me. It's not Alex. I was like right at the mic, but I didn't have it on. Okay, we are going to go back and pick up the open public comment on any topic. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address and municipality. And in response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district. Public comment on any matter is now open. Okay, seeing no public, oh, gotcha, gotcha. Sorry, sorry. Oh, you don't need courage, Brian.
My name is, my name is Brian Kavanaugh and I live at Two Tim Cackling in Hopewell Township. Regarding the comment about trying to move some certain on, on from paraprofessionals and having them grow, this is a very frustrating comment to me personally. For the last over two years, I've been trying to be very proactive in getting my son direct instruction for organization, knowing that that was going to be a personal issue of his. I've hit brick walls with some of the inventive solutions that I've, that I've created and tried to implement. Staff members are sometimes reluctant because he is seeing multiple teachers and each staff member has their own organization system, which then they want to put on him rather than working with the one that he wants to try. I've been promised direct instruction as part of TMS's PAC program and Core Literacy Program. As far as I understand, he has received none. At least he has not communicated any of that to me for me to be able to present that to you. I will also say that many of the teachers use OnCourse differently. Some of them struggle with using it at all. Some of them use it overly. So often he thinks he's missing assignments that he's not actually missing. And some of them are not putting assignments up in a timely manner. And so we find out about a multi-day assignment on the day before it's due because they don't want to see it in their, in their inbox. I may also have been made to understand by several staff members that it's hard to be consistent because of all the changes that have been made on which online platforms to use. So it's frustrating for them to host things online. And why change to OnCourse when it's been changed so many times? I will also say OnCourse itself changes very frequently. I often try to help him. And I can tell you, sometimes it displays the grades in the same page that the assignments are there. Sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes those displays are in letters. Sometimes they're in numbers. And that changes quite frequently. So it is really distressing to be told, grow up, when we try as parents to do so many things that it keep being met with silence or apathy or we can't do that. And I'm probably, I'm not speaking well because I'm upset. And I don't mean those three words. But it's really hard to hear that when we're trying and it's not, and it's hard to get equal meat, equal amount back. I guess is what I, not saying that well and I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township. Just a couple of things that I wanted to draw your attention for next year. I love that you invite all of the Governor Teacher of the Year recipients and the support staff. My plea to you would be next year, when you're holding that recognition, as well as the final budget presentation, to select a larger venue. Many of these individuals wish to have their family and friends come and see them receive such accolades, yet we're limited to the maybe 25 seats that are located in here. So in preparation for next year, I'd like you to think about maybe being at the community room at high school.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none.
One, Mr. Kavanaugh, I'm so sorry at the frustration level. And I think there's, there's levels to this that I can't talk about in the general public. That's, the answer is not, is not always grow up. And some kids need support as long as they need it. And we're here to provide that. But I'm going to pass it off to our Director of Special Services to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah. And Brian, I, you know, I take everything that you say very seriously. And I think, you know, when I wear my special ed hat and lens, I'm looking at that trajectory for our children. And, you know, for me personally, because I've seen children go through the system and now our adults doing many wonderful things, the ultimate goal is to get them to that independence, being able to self-advocate, being able to manage their executive functioning issues. And I, in speaking with you and several others, I do see that that is something that we need to work through. And since our conversation a couple of days ago, you know, Mr. Nidam, our supervisor at the secondary level, special education, and Dr. Hoffman and I have been having some pretty thoughtful discussions and we're hoping to unpack that and see what we can do so that this frustration isn't felt by our families. But also managing that support as they get older, again, managing the support, providing it, but also giving them the toolset so that they can do this independently eventually and experience that success. But again, I do take everything you say very seriously and we are going to work through that. And I'll probably be engaging you and several others in some further discussions about especially the executive and functioning piece of supporting our kids at the secondary level. Thanks.
I'd like to make a comment. I would also really encourage us to see what we can do about some of the consistency across teachers because I do think that is a challenge, you know, having been through the district with three children. I think sometimes when you struggle with executive function and the teachers aren't all using the system in the same way and you don't know where to look for those things, it just compounds that. So it might be a training issue or, you know, whatever it might be to help teachers be able to use OnCourse in the most productive way.
Or something outside of OnCourse in the case where it's just not being managed, you know, that can, it can be in OnCourse, but there's other more manual ways that might work for students as well. So that's something we need to work. We need to adapt to Genovasi as well. When I was talking about the layers that we need to support you with. The final thing was the venue and yes, we will definitely consider that because I'm noticing we are bursting at the seams. We have an issue with audio in there, but we're just going to have to work through it, I think, because it is, it is tight in here.
Okay, with that, a public comment is now closed. And we've already addressed no old business. And now I would like to take a first and second on the consent.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Consent items are passed. We'll move on to our committee update. So starting with finance.
So. So for the previous board meeting before that, Tom did not have a, that he made up for that in the current one. We've talked about the roof leak in Bear Tavern. We have another roof leak at high school, which I think you've mentioned. Multiple clogs in, 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 in the plumbing at Bear Tavern, at Stony Brook, I think in other places with issues clearing those clogs that I'm not even going to attempt to describe. Shadow valves breaking across multiple schools. There's a big wheel on the roof of Stony Brook that has something to do with air conditioning that needs to be replaced, which Tom seems to have had at Bear One, thankfully for. So hopefully that was working today. Because I know my AC in the house was not, it was not pleasant. We've got generators in Tollgate that need repla, repairs. Tom mentioned the old tackle queue restroom in Tollgate, which just has to be abandoned at this point. The preferred solution that we have is to, if the referendum is passed by the community as far as addressing various other issues at Tollgate will have a new bathroom space into a faculty lounge. Because restoring the bathroom there is just not, well, probably anything is feasible, but it's not. There was a pond water leak on one of the modular buildings in Bear Tavern, which Tom was able to catch because the water meter on all of our systems, otherwise that would have probably gone undetected for a very long time. Couldn't see that water was dripping out. Carbon monoxide detectors, I think folks, many folks will probably know that after about seven years, they all start beeping in your houses. Well, apparently they're all beeping all across, I forget which school. Sorry, I didn't take notes, but every single one of them needs to be replaced because the older models had about a seven-year lifespan. Tom said that the newer ones are, are 10-year lifespan. Yeah, and they're not cheap. They're not cheap. They're all hardwired together. So. Speaking from experience in my house and extrapolating out to a school building. Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yes, I know. We have continuing delays with the, my notes say Stony Brook, but it's the Hopewell Elementary chiller installation. I don't know, Bob, if you have an update, but we were discussing the fact that the delays have now, have now crossed into a reasonable territory and what options we may.
Well, we put the contractor on notice and they are, it's not actually, it's the, it's the sub that's the problem. And this, we put the contractor on notice and he's going to be.
Right.
Attempting to charge the subcontractor for the portables.
Yeah.
But we do have temporary air conditioning in those classrooms that's up in, the same thing we had in the fall. So those buildings.
Right now, our target installation date is.
Is the first week in May.
So, yeah, next week.
First week, yeah. We're hoping it's delivered next week.
Yeah. Some good news, we finally have new water service in the admin building. So all the restrooms are back to operational. Insurance has requested in the way that insurance companies request, or I should say, in the Godfather way of requesting that we need new sidewalks all around the administration building. So that's going to be forced. Yeah, there's TMS sewer work. Mold was found in the whirlpool room at the high school where, in the, right, in the sports training room. Pennington Bogger was requiring metering upgrades at electrical meters.
No, water, water meter.
Water meters. We need a new fence for part of the high school territory. And then there are some concrete steps that need replacements in multiple schools. And again, that's something we're hoping to kind of put off. And lots of roofing issues. That's not a complete list. I was trying to capture things. There's a bunch of other minor things that I didn't capture from Tom's list.
Again, the reason why we do this with the committee and for the rest of the, you know, the community and the board is that there are constant things. The referendum is the big item. These are the things, the nagging things that are constantly looking and hitting us. One offs, there's another clog in the bathroom at Tollgate. There's a clog here, there's a leak. So we're chasing those things.
But I wanted to, I felt like this was a good opportunity.
Yeah, no, it's.
The bottom line is. The bottom line is, most of these we are going to, to address. The exceptions are permanent solution to the roofing issues. We're obviously going to patch where the leaks are, some of the concrete work. There's about eighty-eight thousand dollars that is expected to have various grants cover and the rest is about three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars and that's coming out of the general.
Good news is the fence is done at the high school and it looks really good. The other, the other, you know, thing that I try to get out to folks who are in our buildings and we've talked to our, our staff, principals, is a lot of the, the clogs can be avoided. We have things going down the toilet that really shouldn't be going down and that's what's causing the clogs in these old sewers. So lately, kids have been getting creative with
And by things, stuffed animals.
Yes, they found a beanie baby in this stuff.
So, in more fun things, we had Doug B., who is the President of Hopeful Valley YMCA. They provide after-year activities at all of our elementary schools and I call him Doug B., I don't want to mess up his last name. He came in and he provided an overview of the early morning and after-school programs that the YMCA provides. There were a number of areas that we received feedback from the community and the board members during the last team meeting, we provided that feedback to him. And he did say that he was going to go and look into all of those issues and he provided a detailed deck about the program, which we were going to make available to the public. Or he said he was going to provide that deck to us.
It's, uh, it's posted now in Board Doc.
It's posted on Board Doc, but I think we were hoping to find a way to have it be available to the public.
Uh, I can put it in the public, like, we'll post, we can post it in the
In the, in the public area of the Board Doc. And, and that has a much more detailed overview of the project for those who are interested. And that's it for the Finance and Facilities Committee. I don't think we have anything that's not on the consent agenda for us to, uh, no, there's an exception of the
Can I add something real quick? I think you highlighted this, Alex, but I just wanted to point it out again. You sort of went through the laundry list of problems that we're experiencing and I think one of the things that Bob mentioned during the budget presentation, I just want to highlight it, is that many, many of these are being dealt with by our internal staff and that's just huge cost-saving to us. So we're lucky that we have such a talented staff internal to the district that is creative and can manage many of these issues, because I, I do think it saves us a lot of money.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Of the long list that I've read, the roofing and the major age feedback work at Hopeful Elementary, I think are the only ones that we're not doing ourselves. Other questions? Have you defined answer or just spun them over to Bob?
It was good notes.
Thank you, Alex. Good job speaking into your mic. Um, we need to have a motion to accept their donation.
Motion?
Second.
And this is, um, donation on boys' cross uniforms. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Donation accepted? All right. For personnel, we will need a roll call vote.
Oh, wait, I was, I was mentioning one more thing. Mark is not here, but he did volunteer to burn down some of the dead trees personally.
Okay, yeah, not, no.
There was some discussion about controlled burns for the dead trees and I thought that that was not a
That was not a serious comment for those of you who are watching.
I think it might have been serious, but we're good.
Okay. Moving on to personnel, we need a first and second to review and then we'll have a roll call vote at the end and John will be going over the major highlights. So, first and second, please.
So moved.
Okay, go ahead and, your updates, John?
I'm totally, I'm totally on, I know it is. The button's red, everybody. Um, and, and our illustrious Chair, Mr. Peters, is not with us, so thankfully giving my first ever committee report here with the Hopeful Valley Regional Board of Education. So excited to be here. I will try to be as brief as possible. You'll see a few different items on the agenda today, some personal appointments, I want to flag a few retirements in particular. Inga Bocchala, a German teacher at the high school who has been in the district since two thousand one, twenty-three years. Deb Conrad, who's a preschool teacher at Stony Brook, who's been with the district since two thousand seven. Scott Han, the head custodian at Tollgate, who's been with the district since two thousand eight. And Jane Castner, who is a bus driver, who's been with the district since two thousand ten. And you'll see a number of other, you know, normal HR procedures, voluntary transfers and other items as well on your agenda. A couple other updates for you is that we continue to work on the Supervisor of Counseling job description to make it more relevant, focus on SEL and a few other issues, and we expect that to, to be available for your approval next month. And also, we did, of course, recognize our Governor of Educators and our Staff Support Professionals of the Year here earlier, so we're very excited about that and, you know, congratulations to all of them. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was we have two search committees that are actively in process, we'll say, and for the supervisor roles for ELA as well as counseling. And we also expect to have those to be concluded by next month with some approvals therein. And I believe that's everything. Thank you, thank you.
All right, with that said, we need a roll call vote. Thank you, John.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Dr. Lou. Dr. Resnick. Flo. Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovasi.
Yes.
Mr. Capadia.
Yes.
And Ms. Williams-Gallion.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to EdCon.
Yeah, so we discussed a number of items at the last education committee. The first one was Ms. Ruth Delpino from Mercer Council asked for approval of student survey. A couple of years ago, there was a quite extensive student survey looking at a number of issues, including students' mental health and LGBT groups, among other issues. And the purpose of the survey for this fiscal year is really to help identify trends and see if there are gaps that we can help to close. And our district staff will have the opportunity to shape the questions and also work with the staff to see what, what kinds of categories of survey that we want to add in the questions. And the board provided feedback on really leveraging the survey results to see how we can help the, the kids in our district. Another item that was discussed was Mr. George Niethem and Ms. Beth Hoffman came to talk about the special ed program offerings and, and they provided a very nice overview. We learned about the special ed offerings from preschool, the elementary schools, the secondary education, including both middle school and high schools. We learned about the philosophy of the program setup, the different approaches. For example, at the elementary schools, they just celebrate the Disability Awareness Month and also talked about to autism classrooms. At the secondary education special ed program level, they introduced the facilitator model and also what kind of in-class resources are provided and also their practice to, to implement a community-based learning and work-based learning. Another agenda item was Ms. Amy Baskin came to talk about the book rationale approval of a new book, All My Rage, was discussed for high school summer reading and there was no issue with that. And again, Mr. Steve Wilfing came to discuss the changes to the middle school math pathways. That was, that topic was elaborately discussed in the past and Mr. Wilfing, working with his team, have come up with some recommended changes. For example, the, the prerequisite of ninety-five percent for students to move to next level, a more advanced math class, has been reduced to ninety percent. And also, they implemented eighty-seven percent to qualify waiver. With this type of adjustments, there will be more students moving to advanced math classes in our districts, including algebra and geometry at a later stage. The board provided some additional feedback, for example, to look at the alignment between the tests and instruction and track students who are at various levels of math courses and how, see how well they are doing. And also, information was discussed about students being at, at the grade level, below or above, like what that means in the context of our district and how to communicate that information back to the parents for improvement and awareness purposes. And, and last, Dr. Vicky Politzis discussed the review of Timbaland Middle School Student Survey. So the eighth graders will be identified to survey about the master's schedule and questions will be asked, for example, which schedule they like better, whether the traditional schedule they had in sixth grade or the rotate and drop schedule. And this is really to help us gather input from our students and see how we can best refine our schedule. Anything additional from the committee?
I was just going to add two quick things. One was, I just want to express my appreciation to the English Department for being proactive with adding a book like All My Rage. Our district is home to an increasingly diverse population and there's an increasing, a population specifically of South Asian students, so to have, you know, our students see themselves in a book that's telling the story of a Pakistani family, I think that's a great step forward. I also do just want to commend Dr. Politzis and Mr. Wilfing for adjusting the math placement. I think by lowering that, that score to ninety percent and adding a qualified waiver to eighty-seven percent, it's just allowing more students to have the opportunity to take those advanced level math classes and it changes our, our previous almost rigid structure that not only put a lot of pressure on students, but in a way limited them from being able to pursue some of those higher level math classes that we saw. So just want to express my appreciation and to my fellow board members who have been bringing up those issues in years prior.
And I want to also add, I really appreciate the addition of the facilitated position at the secondary. It's a great move forward to support students who might not need an inclusive classroom but might need other support, so I really appreciate the addition of that position.
I just had a follow-up question for you, Lydia. So you had mentioned in the beginning, I think it was the first survey, you were talking about a student survey related to student mental health. Can you, I, I missed just like who's conducting that survey and where is it coming from? Could you share a bit more?
It's, oh, it's, it's for Mercer County, Mercer Council?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so they are doing kind of like a follow-up study to, when we had done the Search Institute survey, I can't, I think it was last year or the year before.
It was a year.
And so just some of the, the trends that they had identified in this Search Institute, they're going to expand on those trends and, and get a broader understanding or more, a more specific understanding of some of the, the topics that were, they noticed.
And these are members of, these members sit on the Municipal Alliance with Heidi Kami and all of us. And so when they got the Search Institute findings, which the Municipal Alliance supports and pays for, they noticed that we had populations of students that were showing they were having higher frequencies of at-risk behaviors they were taking. And so they want to try to isolate those populations and look at, do an additional survey. And again, we'll communicate this to parents and we'll share the survey questions with you as well and, and you will give your permission for them to participate in this, as in all surveys. But we're looking to see if there's any gaps in how we're servicing those students. And one group in particular that we were concerned about is the LGBTQ population. They seem to have the fewest number of positive assets that we would like them to have out of the groups and the most at-risk behavior. So we just want to make sure that we're not missing anyone. But it could be a larger survey of any questions we'd like. So as you're, if you, if you're thinking of something board, you want to get that to the Education Program Committee, we can make sure as we're honing those questions, we include them.
Yeah, that's really helpful, thank you. I think one of the things I always think about with these surveys is like, what's in it for us, right? Like it needs to be useful to us if they're surveying our students and it sounds like it will be. But I do think, you know, having just come out of the strategic planning sessions, really thinking about, are there things that were lifted up in those sessions that we need to learn more about to inform the action plan that's going to come out of those goals and objectives? And whether we could potentially leverage this opportunity for, you know, a free survey and data analysis to be able to inform that plan? So, thank you, appreciate the context.
And just in terms of timing, the survey wouldn't take place until the, the following school year, so, you know, to add, like, we would have to just amend our action plan to include some other things that we found from that survey.
Great, thank you. All right, go ahead and move on to community relations.
We had essentially, addressed essentially three different things. And one is, was the idea of getting ourselves out there to listen to the community in better fashion. The other one was, we're talking about the referendum and tomorrow we'll have a little discussion with the senior citizens of Hopeful Valley and sort of elucidate all this with them. And the third was, was talking about some of the networking, networking we might be able to do with the community to support some of the emotional, social, emotional problems that we've been experiencing. I think there's a lot of, of ways that we can empower kids to, to confront and understand their own problems and, and need to work on that. And we talked a little bit about screen reduction and making sure that, that didn't interfere with a lot of what's going on.
Well, I think you did a wonderful job recapping.
All right, SEL?
Yeah, so, we did not have a regular meeting with SEL. We really look to support our teachers and our students and our administration with the tragic loss of one of our students. And so we really took that time to review what we were doing, the supports we had in place. And I know Dr. Therese just attended a traumatic loss seminar and would you like to
Yes, I, as, if you may know Okay. So, many of you know, we did have a dramatic loss right as we were going into spring break. And we were lucky enough that, to have strong protocols in place that our Principal Riley, Ms. Smith, Ms. Donardo, they really circled the wagons and made sure that we put in place an action plan that we have for traumatic loss. We think TLC, it's an organization that comes out and supports us in those, in We think TLC, it's an organization that comes out and supports us in these times of need. Also, Air Dogs, we had all of our pups here, our counselors came in, we were able to open schools. I sat in on a webinar today just to kind of make sure that we were doing the right thing. And it just validated everything that we did. It's unfortunate that we've had this sort of practice in the past. I would like to get it down to zero where we don't have these things happen. But we did the best we could in a very bad situation. And I want to thank the community who's also circled the wagons to support in this time of need for the family. It's just never easy to do this, but again, I want to thank my team for really being strong through this and the families for supporting, the family that lost their daughter. We were unfortunately not the only one, they were, I just had dinner with Ms. Baker just to kind of catch up. She runs Air Dogs for us. We had five in that two-week span, five losses, five traumatic losses. So it's really a tough time and hopefully we can do better. Some of that was accidents, but at least three of those were students dying by suicide. So we have to continue to do this work. And as you said, when we do this survey, we need to be thinking about, you know, kind of what's in it for us, what kind of questions do we need to be asking so we can start teasing this out? In Mercer County. In Mercer County, not in us, not us, but in Mercer County, we had five. It was Lawrence, us, Stewart, and then there were two others, I don't remember who they were.
I just wanted to make sure it's clear for both of us.
Yes, Mercer County. Thank you for that.
So this, this is, this is, the survey is something that we can have input into? Is that what I understand? Are we doing the kinds of research? When I, when I, gone? Whenever I've done a survey, I've, I've had extensive research in terms of the different constructs that I want to get into the survey. Are we doing that kind of research right now? Or are we, are we having, are we building the, the sort of the evidence we need in order to create the pieces of the survey, the questions or whatever on the survey?
They must be certainly giving you, giving us the opportunity to build those questions, and you will all, you will see the survey. So we'll definitely be leaning on you for some of your expertise for that. But yeah, they haven't built it yet. They think they've given us samples, though, that are, are they, is that attached to the EdCom notes? So if we could add those so that we, you could take a look, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Thank you all.
I'll, I'll thank this comment. You're going to attach it to the outcome, though? I'll, so my observation was, those are example questions, and it's a pretty exhaustive list. And it's a little bit all over the place. So one of the things we talked about in that, is making sure as we build our survey, we are very clear about what the objectives are that we're trying to get to and then build and make certain that it's all those objectives. As you look at the list of questions, I think it's very good list. You're thinking about it as a, like a superset of questions.
Is there some kind of organization to these questions? I mean, are there categories or?
But again, that was for another district in the county, so ours might have the same headings but be different questions.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Yes, I will, give the highlights. So Policy Committee met on April 12th. We do have a lot on the table. We have five policies up for first reading and five sets of policies and regulations. But before I jump in, I, the Policy Committee did spend a decent amount of the meeting discussing the district's rules around mobile phone use in schools. And I heard that Dr. Wilson brought this up as well, so it sounds like you spoke about it in Community Relations, too. So I just wanted to provide a really brief summary of that conversation. So in the strategic planning sessions, screen time, the use of social media were raised by the community as major topics of concern. And we also know that the scientific research is really increasingly showing the harmful effects of social media and screen time on adolescents' mental health and their academic achievement. So the school district does have rules around restricting mobile phone use in schools, but there's currently some concerns that have been raised about just how effective they are. So as a next step, we're inviting a representative from the district's Digital Wellness Committee to share more, hopefully at the May Policy Committee meeting, just about the research in this area and also what other districts' policies around this look like. So we hope to continue this conversation with the board. So I'll stop there because it looks like we might have a question.
I guess more of a comment from me, at least a couple of conversations of what I was part of. It was the, it was the screen time and the use of devices by the students, but also modeling appropriate behaviors by the staff members, making sure that that's. I want to make sure that we address the value of that issue.
Any other comments from Policy Committee just on that topic? Okay, okay, good. So first reading, so can I have a motion and a second to move Policies 5600, Student Discipline Code of Conduct, 2411, Guidance and School Counseling, 5842, Equal Access of Student Organizations, 5752, Marital Status and Pregnancy, and 2416, Programs for Pregnant Pupils for First Reading?
So moved.
Okay, great. So the first policy that you'll see here, 5600, the Student Discipline Code of Conduct relates to the school's code of conduct, which establishes the standards, policies, and procedures around student behavioral expectations. So the board last revised this policy guide in 2012. But as many of you will remember, we discussed and revised the accompanying regulation in September 2023. So we're recommending just a couple minor revisions to Policy Guide 5600. So if you're following along, in the first paragraph, we've added language clarifying that the purpose of our student code of conduct is really to help foster the health, safety, and social-emotional well-being of students. On page one, the policy states that the code of conduct should be applied equitably across all students, and we just revised this language to ensure that all the protected categories that are outlined in state code are covered. We've updated the policy to include language in the state code which indicates that the Board of Education can deny participation in certain extracurricular activities for violation of the code of conduct. And then we've updated the name of the Student Safety Incident Reporting System. And then last, you'll see several updates to administrative code citations. Any questions about this one or comments? Okay, all right. So moving on to the second one is 2411, Guidance and School Counseling. So this policy requires the school district to offer a counseling program to students that includes career research and exploration, academic planning, and personal development. We last updated this in June 2018. So just drawing your attention to page one here. So the board has four choices that you'll see on this page. And this is really about how we want to implement counseling. So you can see that it can be conducted entirely by teaching staff members who are certified as guidance personnel, include the services of teaching staff members certified as guidance personnel and other designated teaching staff, be the responsibility of the classroom teacher, who can draw on the services of specialized staff, or involve the coordinated efforts of all teaching staff under the leadership of certified counseling staff. So the committee is recommending option four, which aligns with our current practice in the district. And then here, we also have additional minor revisions, providing just more detail to ensure that students equitable access to adequate counseling that's free from bias. And you'll see that this focuses on the career opportunities that are shared with students as well as the tests that materialize that are utilized as part of counseling services. Questions or comments on that one? So next, we have Policy 5842, which is Equal Access of Student Organizations. So this policy provides for student organizations' access to school facilities and also makes clear that access won't be denied on the basis of one of the protected categories that are specified in state code, like gender, race, or disability, or the content of the speech at the meeting per the First Amendment. So you'll see that there's just been minor updates to the state code citations. The list of protected categories has been removed and cites back to the state code. I think the bigger revisions here can be found on pages one and two. So there's language indicating that no employee of the district can promote, lead, or participate in the student group meetings that has been removed from this policy. But now, in the highlighted language on page two, it states that the school district staff's involvement in student organizations shall be in accordance with the governing principles of the First Amendment. And this is really in response to Kennedy versus, I'm going to say this wrong, from Merton's School District decision, which was a recent Supreme Court decision that came through. Okay, so any other, any questions, comment on this? Okay, so then we have two more that are up for first reading. So these last two policies up for first reading were required to review as part of the statement of assurances related to our comprehensive equity plan. Both of these policies pertain to pregnant and parenting students. So for Policy 5752, Marital Status and Pregnancy, this policy essentially says that the board and the district won't discriminate against any student based on marital status, pregnancy, or parenthood, and that students have equal access to our district's educational, co-curricular, and athletic programs. This was last revised in 2009. And we're just recommending small edits here to include gender-neutral language. And then the second one is similar and ensures that no student will be denied an educational program because of pregnancy, childbirth, pregnancy-related disability, or parenthood, also revised in 2009. So here, again, we included gender-neutral language. And then we made sure that the policy does state that a student who's physically unable to attend regular classes can be assigned to an alternate instructional program. And we just made clear that this should be done with the consent of the student and their caregiver. So that's it for the policies up for first reading. Do my Policy Committee colleagues have anything to add that I might have missed?
I just think it's important as we go through some of these more archaically phrased policies that we continue to ensure that we mandate gender-neutral language rather than the things that we've seen in current.
Okay. So can I please have a motion and a second to move Policy and Regulation, oops, sorry?
You already have the motion and the second.
Oh, for second read? Okay.
You did motion, second for first read, you should vote on that.
Okay.
No.
So do you want to do the voice, the voice?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do the first reading first and then go.
So all, all in favor? All in favor. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, vote carries on first reading. Now, second. Now we're good on second reading? Yeah, okay.
Let's move the two and three at the same time because then you both need roll call. We'll do the second reading and abolishment at the same moment.
Okay, all good. Okay, so can I please have a motion and a second to move Policy and Regulation 1642.01 sick leave, Policy and Regulation 3212 and 4212 attendance, Policy 5750, Equitable Educational Opportunity, Policy and Regulation 2260, Equity in School and Classroom Practices for second reading, and Policy and Regulation 4432, Sick Leave for Abolishment? All right, just one more time for you, Alex.
Motion. Second.
Okay, so I'm not going to go into these in detail because we discussed them at length in the March full board meeting. And we did receive no revisions or concerns from the board. So I'll just remind folks that the new policy and regulation around sick leave and the revised policy and regulations around attendance are primarily to put us in compliance with the new law that was signed into place in July 2023 that addresses sick leave requirements among school district employees. And then the second set of policies and regulations are required per the Department of Education's comprehensive. Okay.
Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman. Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovace.
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia. Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Dr. Liu. And Ms. Williams-Cullion.
Yes. Thank you for that. No, we did that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and we need to have a first and second on May calendars. Then we'll.
Second.
Okay, we'll start with SEL since it's already on the calendar for May 9th. Does that still work, May 9th at 10 o'clock for you folks? Eight at 10 o'clock? Is there a group that backs up against SEL? Okay, we have Personnel, May 20th at 6:00. I was going to do Policy, does the 13th work, 5 o'clock, May 13th? Finance Facility. May 13th. Monday.
Five?
Ed Pro. Yeah. We did Policy 5. Go off.
Never work.
The Wednesday. Eight is next week. Get late? A quick turnaround. And Policy? Community Relations.
Congratulations. Oh. Advanced, advanced congratulations.
Community Relations. Community Relations. Dr. Mike?
What?
Community Relations.
What, I'm supposed to cut that? What, what about the May 8th, I mean, SCL's at 10:30, how about like 9:30 for?
May 8th. 9:30.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have? We went through the whole calendar, but abstaining or?
Opposed or abstaining.
Opposed or abstaining, thank you. Zero.
Okay.
Um, okay, calendars passed. New business? For anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into our final public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter's researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open. Okay, seeing no comments, public comment is now closed. Um, with that, I need a first and second to move into executive session for the evening to discuss, um, HIB and, um, a HBESDA grievance issue.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you, community, for joining us this evening. Appreciate it.